Okay, welcome to those that are joining us from home. Tonight is a work session for the PCOsen City Council. This is February 25th, it's a Monday, and we're here to talk about two things in this work session. First is a presentation by the Greater Peninsula Workforce Board. And here with us, we have Mr. John Olson, who is the Chair, and Mr. Bill Mann, who is the Executive Director. So appreciate y'all being with us. And the other item will be a discussion of an intersection within the city that we're considering doing an improvement to, and that's the intersection of Little Florida, PCOsen Avenue, basically known as what we call Shipwreck Island, where the little batto sticks out on the median. All right? So without anything further, Randy, have you got anything you want to say before these gentlemen go?
No, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to speak before your group here. And again, my name's John Olson, I'm the Chair for the Greater Peninsula Workforce Board, and this is Mr. Mann, the Executive Director. And we're just going to provide you with a quick, brief overview in terms of what the Workforce Board is here. So that's just, we are one of fifteen boards across the state of Virginia. The map up there just gives you a basic idea, who all, what are all the localities that we comprise. It's basically the Greater Peninsula, but we also include Gloucester within Area Fifteen of our Workforce Board. Just basically, our mission and statement of vision there, we want to be the regional catalyst in workforce and economic development by bringing stakeholders together both to discuss and solve workforce-related issues across, at least across our area. And to give you a basic idea, that is, some of our members are actually already sitting amongst the table here. We have from PCOsen, Mr. Bartow, from the public, the private side. Our LEO is Mr. Green over there, and Mr. Wheeler also serves on the board. And, easy enough, Mr. Mann.
All right, thank you, John. Just, yes. Oh, okay. All right, there we go. Just a quick acknowledgement, for those who know me, as Mr. Green does, I've been doing workforce development for some number of years, but Mr. Green has the distinction of being the longest service-serving member of both our consortium of local elected officials as well as board members.
I'm the oldest, too.
Well, I wasn't going to go there, but, but I just wanted to acknowledge his years of service and support for what was originally a private industry council that became a workforce development board, and just wanted to say thank you personally to Mr. Green for all those years of support. What you're looking at here is the photos, some photos of the inside of our Virginia Career Works Hampton Center. This was originally known as a One-Stop Career Center. It's now called an American Job Center. The Department of Labor loves to put names and acronyms on things and such. But this is our flagship operation. It's located, as you can see, on 600 Butler Farm Road. It's on the campus of Thomas Nelson Community College. And this is where we deliver all of our services for adults and dislocated workers, as well as some young adults, younger individuals, those who are perhaps between secondary and post-secondary school. Under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, each local workforce development area is required to have at least one brick-and-mortar comprehensive one-stop center. And this is our facility here. And what you're looking at up in the top there, we have a classroom that we can use for a variety of workshops, various types of activities. We have, the bottom-left photo here is where we meet and greet folks, both job seekers as well as employers who come into our facility for assistance. This particular part of the facility is staffed by both folks with the Workforce Board, as well as our partner organizations, which could be Thomas Nelson, the Virginia Employment Commission, the Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services, a variety of organizations that we partner with to deliver services out there. And one of the very important parts of the operation is our resource room, which you see pictured over here off to the right, where we have a whole series of computers set up in little module areas and such. And folks can come in there and access all sorts of information about employment opportunities, education, job training programs, just a variety of information. And that is accessible to anyone who walks into the facility. And so we have quite an operation, stays pretty busy, and this is where our program staff primarily operate from. Our goal here is to improve job and career options for our region's workers and job seekers, and we do this by utilizing both public and private resources to support what is called an integrated, job-driven, public workforce system that links the needs of area employers for a skilled workforce with diverse talent development strategies that are designed to equip workers with the skills, and most importantly, the industry-recognized credentials that our area employers are looking for in their workforce. So this is what goes on in this particular facility here. Now, in addition to what you see here, and we don't have a slide for it, we need to add that in our next go-around, we do have a contract with New Horizons Regional Education Center. They are a youth service provider, and they provide services to both in-school as well as out-of-school youth. And so we work very closely with Mr. Casey Roberts and his staff over at New Horizons to round out a program of services directed toward youth, adults, and dislocated workers. Now, one of the things that's really important is that, given the geography of our area, it can be somewhat difficult to get from one place to the other in terms of accessing services. And we found that to be true with people trying to get over to Butler Farm Road. And so what we have here, and what we employ, are shared network access points, or SNAP sites, where we have volunteers who work with our staff at Butler Farm Road to deliver services that are further into the community, that are more accessible to individuals coming out of various neighborhoods. And one of our SNAP sites is here at PCOsen Public Library. And so this really does help us to extend our reach. If you were to look across the fifteen local workforce areas, I think we probably have more SNAP sites than any other local area. And it really helps to serve our purpose in terms of acquainting people with what we have going on at Butler Farm Road, delivering some of those services in their neighborhood and in their communities, and acquainting them with the various programs that we have, the partnerships that we have in place, the things that we can help them do with their education and career plans. And it's a good way of conducting outreach and recruitment into the various communities. So we're very pleased to have PCOsen Public Library as part of that process. Now, as I said earlier, we have both public as well as private resources supporting the work of the Board. And what you see here in this particular pie chart is how the funding generally breaks down. And this is for the current program year that we're in, Program Year 2018. Our program year runs on a July 1 to June 30 basis, and fortunately for us, we are forward-funded, so we didn't get caught up in the mess with the government shutdown here recently. Our funding was secure through the end of the program year. And our federal funds, as you can see, the $4.1 million, which is the vast majority of the dollars that we have to work with, has a two-year authorization period, so we can program it over the course of 24 months, which helps us in looking at services and program activity through that particular period. We also receive local per capita money. You see, that's programmed at $255,000. This is based on a 51% per capita contribution. And then the other funding that you see, the $241 up there, we're very aggressive in terms of chasing various grants, foundations, other private sector money, as well as funding from local employers. One of the things that we have found is that, as we have gone along with our program services, employers come to us asking if we can set up various programs, and often, they're willing to provide the cost of providing the training for those programs. And I can give you an example. This past year, we had Ferguson come to us, they were having issues finding people for entry-level plumbing jobs for their subcontractors. And so they asked for our assistance in putting some training together, and we agreed to do it. We partnered with New Horizons, and they provided us with over $22,000 in funding to support that training. So that's really good when you can get the employer community to buy into that process and help with the cost of providing the training that these individuals need. So as you can see, the vast majority courses that, $4.1 million, about 89% of our overall funding, with about 6% from per capita and another 5% from those other sources. Now, in terms of the per capita, I thought you would be interested in seeing how that plays out. And as you can see, we've got our seven localities listed. And of course, Newport News being our largest locality, you know, provides the largest amount of funding for this. You can see PCOsen there at the 5847 level. Of course, being our smallest locality, everything is proportionate based on the per capita and such. But all of it is very important. And one of the reasons it's important is that, as any of you know who've dealt with the federal government, for every dollar you get, there's about 200 pages worth of regulations, okay? And so we are no exception to that rule, and we have stacks of regs about yay-high and such. And so that $4.1 million is very much regulatory-driven, if you will, in terms of making sure all your i's are dotted and your t's are crossed. These funds, along with the other dollars that we get from private sources, are more unrestricted, if you will, and we can do some things with that that we can't do with the federal dollars. One of the things that does allow us to do is get away from those eligibility criteria that, you know, accompany the federal dollars in terms of who you can serve, in terms of youth, the adults, and of course, the dislocated workers. So this is very important funding for us, for the Board, in terms of putting together a more comprehensive package of services. Now, what are those services? Well, this gives you a rundown of what we can do for businesses, as well as what we can offer our job seekers. And I won't read that to you. I'll just say that we really have two customer groups here, the employer community, as well as the job seekers. And we often view them, while they're both customers, we often view the employer as our primary customer, and our product is the skilled, trained, credentialed job seeker that we can then bring to the table to meet the needs of the employer community for the workforce that's going to help them be successful in whatever their particular business happens to be. And so these are some of the things that we can offer, and it's a fairly, fairly good list of activities. Now, in terms of participant numbers, what you see here are registrants and total participants. And again, PCOsen being relatively small, the numbers that we're looking at for both registrations as well as participation are relatively small as well. Registration's the difference between the two. We're talking about people who would have walked into our resource room and accessed the computer banks that we have for assistance with education, or information on jobs and that sort of thing, whereas participants are actually folks that are enrolled. Now, the other part of this that you're not seeing up there, we're getting ready to run this coming March, the 21st, our Youth Career Expo. And this is open to all of the high schools throughout our area, and so there are another 50 PCOsen youth that you're not seeing on this chart who are able to come out and take advantage of the Youth Career Expo, the mock interviews, the workshops, the exhibits. And so we think that's important. And then there is one other thing that's in the works right now that I just wanted to share with you, and it's still stored in the planning stages, but we expect it to take off here in the not-too-distant future. I've been working very closely with Peter Wallantish, he's the Director for Williamsburg Human Services, and he has put together a program called the Triangle, or Historic Triangle: Pathways to Independence Project Employed. And this is a collaboration between the Williamsburg Department of Human Services, James City County Social Services, York PCOsen Social Services, ourselves, and Thomas Nelson Community College. And it's a program that's going to provide education, job training, and skills development for TANF view clients. So we're expecting to see more of those public recipients get involved in our program. And the idea here is to equip them with some of the basic skills, the soft skills, customer service skills, that many employers are looking for in our particular area. So we think this is going to be a really good program, and we're excited to partner with all of our social service friends here. In addition to having a stack of regulations fairly high, we are also very much driven by performance metrics. And this is a good thing. We really view these monies as an investment, because we're investing in people's education, in their job training, their skill development, and we want to see them get those industry-recognized credentials. And so we're looking for a return on investment with these dollars that we invest. And what you're seeing here are the performance metrics that come with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And if you go down the left side, you can see they're broken down by adult, dislocated youth. The measure descriptions are there in that more or less the center of the chart. And of course, we're looking at employment, we're looking at median earnings, credential attainment. The same thing for dislocated workers, and very much the same sort of thing in terms of youth. And I'll point out, if you notice, when we take our measures, we're looking to see what happens generally after someone has already left our program, and there has been some amount of time, the second quarter, a fourth quarter has elapsed before we actually run the calculations. What you're seeing in the negotiated level there are the levels that we negotiate every year with the state. The state is required, under this legislation, to negotiate performance standards with each of the fifteen local boards. And so those are, were our measures, and this, of course, is for Program Year 17, which would have ended June 30 of 2018. And so these are the measures that we were working against. The youth one that you see at the bottom where it says baseline, that was a new one, and so they didn't have data to establish what that goal was. But if you look in the next column over, you can see what our actual performance was, and then what that percentage equals in terms of the actual performance of negotiated level. Now, under the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act, if you achieve 80% of that negotiated level, the feds say you've met your goal for the year. If you exceed that, then of course, you've done very well. And as you can see, over in that far right-hand corner, we exceeded all of our goals, with the exception of that very bottom one for youth, but we did meet that as well. So we've got a pretty good track record here. We've been administering programs under what was, what is now WEOA, what was the Workforce Investment Act, WEA before that, when these measures first started. And so we've got about a 20-plus successful track record, 20-plus-year successful track record of meeting our standards. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the team, our staff, as well as all of our partners, who have worked very hard to contribute to the achievement of these goals. The thing that's really important, though, about these statistics is that there are real, live people behind all of these numbers. Folks with dreams and goals and ambitions, they want to achieve something with their lives and such. And what we try to focus on at our meetings, and what we send up to our friends in Richmond and up to Philadelphia, where the Department of Labor has their regional office, are success stories. And this is about a gentleman that we were able to assist, and again, I'm not going to read this all to you here. But we're very pleased when we have the opportunity to sit down and talk one-on-one with the folks that are working in our One-Stop Career Center, because they're in direct contact with these individuals, and they relay to the members of the Board the success stories behind each of these numbers, the statistics that you're seeing. And this is just one of them. And it's really something when you get to go to a graduation ceremony, for many people, their experience in this program is the first success that they've been able to enjoy, either academically or in a new career pathway. And it's really rewarding to see that, when they receive that certificate and diploma and such. So just wanted to call that to your attention. That pretty much concludes our remarks for this evening. I did bring copies of our last annual report, and there are more success stories in there, as well as numbers and other information about the various activities that the Boards engaged in. And we'd be glad to respond to any questions that you might have now.
What's a displaced worker?
A displaced worker would be an individual who was employed, but because of a plant closure or a reduction in force, they lost their position, and it's not likely that they're going to be able to go back to that same job or career again. And so they need to develop new occupational skills. And so that's what we do, we help them train for new careers.
Anybody else? I just have, well, I've got one question. And this is morally an observation, and you can confirm or tell me I'm not thinking about this correctly. But in a market that's driven today, where we probably have more jobs than we have people to fill them, that's one set of challenges for you. And then that can always reverse in a bad economy, where you have a lot of displaced workers and not enough jobs. And how do those performance measures, is that why you redo them every two years?
Well, we, yes, we redo them annually, at least upon what's going on. And when we sit down and talk with the folks in Richmond, the funds flow through, from the Department of Labor, down to the Virginia Community College system. They have an administrator there who then disperses the funds to the fifteen local boards. And so when we work with him on performance measures, we sit down and we discuss what's going on in the local economy, because your observations are absolutely correct. The economy goes up, goes down, and the dynamics change and such, and so those performance measures would change to reflect those differences.
Bill, if you don't mind, if you don't feel prepared to do this, but could you just say a few words about the ongoing negotiations with the South Side and the idea of that collaboration? I think that's a great thing.
Absolutely. Yeah, this, well, this goes back to about last May-June, April. We began having conversations with our colleagues over on the other side of Hampton Roads. And the idea was that we're all part and parcel of the same public workforce system. And when it comes to working with employers, an employer is not particularly concerned about the geographic or jurisdictional boundaries that we typically think about when we put programs together for service delivery. And so we began conversations, John and his counterpart, Elsino Miles, and myself and my counterpart, Sean Avery, about bringing the two boards together in terms of how we engage the business community, so that an employer would not have to discern, should I be talking to the people on the South Side of Hampton Roads or over on the Peninsula? And so what we've done is we've brought our two organizations together. We haven't merged, but we are working hand and glove, and we are delivering services with a single point of contact to our employer community. And this has really been well-received by the employers, you know, here in Hampton Roads on the Peninsula. Richmond is watching us very closely. This is a historic first-of-the-kind-type venture. And we're working closely with them. We're also working closely with them to secure additional private sector funding, and we've engaged the services of the McDonald Group to help support this joint effort between what is the Hampton Roads Workforce Council and our Board here on the Peninsula and such. And it's really moving forward very well. We've already, working closely, I'm sure you all are aware of what's going on within the maritime industry here in terms of, they can't keep up with the baby boomer retirements, much less fill the jobs that are coming down the road as we move towards building a 355-fleet Navy. And so there is lots of job opportunities, and it really is incumbent upon both the two Boards to take a look at, how can we use the resources that we have to bring people that are not into the workforce into the workforce and help address this issue that they have and such? And of course, it's just not maritime, you know, healthcare, construction these days. So, but this is a very unique working relationship. We had our first joint executive committee meeting.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. John and Elsino chaired that. I thought it went very well.
Went very well.
And this coming March, we'll be having a joint full-board meeting at Hampton University, and it'll be the first time that that's ever occurred. So we're breaking some new ground and leading the way here.
So besides technical jobs, like, you know, the frontline mechanics, you mentioned the two things. Do you have anything that offers, like supervisory skills or any type of management skills, first level management, like you said, mentioned the McDonald's Corporation? Something above server, maybe?
We do. We incorporate that as part of our training. That as well as entrepreneurial training as well, for individuals who are interested somewhere down the road of having their own business. And that has happened with a number of the folks that we've worked with. So yes, that is very much a part of it. We want to put people on a pathway that moves them from where they're at into a position where they have family-sustaining wages and fringe benefits. We don't want this to be a revolving door, and once we see them, they come back again. We want to make sure that they're moving forward. And so that's part and parcel of being able to equip them with the skills to move ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for, any other questions or comments? Thanks for, thanks for coming and sharing with us, and we'll replay this, so hopefully more people will become familiar with your services.
That would be terrific. We'd really like that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
All right, you too. All right, Ellen.
Let's bring our board up.
Your board?
Board.
So something hit me. I have it down here.
Oh.
I've done this before. Is that one?
There. Slide check. I'm here so that I have.
Do the clicking.
Yeah. Now Garrett's sitting down. Charge.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So we're here to talk about the intersection of PCOsen Avenue, Leyden Way, and Little Florida, commonly known as Shipwreck Island. And tonight, we have Matt Mater and Wes Parker from Clark Nexon. And what happened is after Garrett developed the basic alternatives for Shipwreck Island, Clark Nexon came in and kind of gave it a one-over, since they deal in transportation projects full-time, and also did some cost estimation for us. And finally, they also looked at applying some traffic calming measures for the intersection. So Wes, I think you're going to take the lead talking tonight, so, and I'm here to flip the switches.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for having us here tonight. So we basically looked at two main options that we're going to present tonight, and basically, some goals that we kind of laid out, you know, first and foremost is, how can we realign the intersection, make it safe, but also make it very cost-effective and have as little impact on possible as the adjacent property owners, as well as utility companies and things like that? I'll talk about that more in detail later. And so with the first alternative, really what we're looking at here is, there was already right-of-way purchase for, I guess, a previous concept design to allow a roundabout here, which is now off the table. So our alternative took into account this acquisition of previous property and realigned the intersection. So as you can see here, it's relatively straightforward from the standpoint of making sure that we had a designed speed limit of 25 miles an hour, coming to a stop sign condition at the intersection. And it's important to note, the green area that you see right there, we actually, even though we're at a very high level of preliminary planning, wanted to make sure that something we were proposing stormwater-management-wise is actually feasible. So we're going to utilize that additional area of green space for a BMP or best-management practice, so we could get some sort of stormwater-management control, as well as stormwater credits, so that the additional impervious area we're adding is going to be sufficient for the project. So probably the biggest setback to the realignment of the intersection, which is definitely overcomeable, is there's about five utility poles. There's actually three different power poles, as well as a couple of poles that have communication infrastructure on top of them. They will need to be relocated as part of this project. We do a lot of work with the utility companies, so we can only presume where those poles are going to go. So you'll see in the notes on the next page that we will need some potential utility easements, because these will need to be relocated as part of the project, as well as some temporary easements to just do some fine-tune grading as we tie back into the existing ground. And I already talked about the BMPs. So alternative two is the same horizontal alignment, but really, what we wanted to look at here is, there is a perceived speeding problem on the main line here, so we wanted to look at some really cost-effective solutions for helping to reduce the speed. And we also wanted to propose solutions that really weren't impactful to the motoring public. So you may have heard the term, like, speed tables, or obviously, the road isn't really applicable for speed bumps, but we wanted to have something very unintrusive to there. So what was proposed is actually putting raised medians along the main line there. And what this actually does is it basically forces people to pay more attention, it treats it more of an urban environment than just the shoulder, two-lane, undivided section. And so it actually is natural for people to slow down in this effect. So we think that this is a really cost-effective solution that actually will put forth So what was proposed is actually putting raised medians along the main line there. And what this actually does is it basically forces people to pay more attention. It treats it more of an urban environment than just the shoulder, two-lane, undivided section. And so it actually is natural for people to slow down in this effect. So we think that this is a really cost-effective solution that actually will put forth some benefits with this alternative. Also, as you can see here, we've added turn lanes, so this will also allow for the traffic to get off the main line more effectively and quickly. And the great thing about this here is, the way that this layout is, again, we're not impacting any proposed right-of-way acquisition. We're only looking at temporary easements for fine-tune grading, as well as utility relocations. We do impact, I think, one additional utility pole with this alternative versus the other one, because of the right turn lane here on the southwest side of the intersection. But overall, the same impacts, but the additional benefit of those turn lanes, as well as the traffic calming operations.
Okay.
Yeah?
That's the right place?
Yep, that's the right place. I talked through the bullets, so we can come back to those later if you want. And then obviously, pricing options. You can see here, these are preliminary cost estimates that we've come up with. We do think these are conservative in nature, but we do recommend that you can never underestimate that smaller projects like this do tend to be a lot more expensive per square foot, as far as total improvement area, just because right now, the industry is very, very heavy with work. And so contractors tend to be not as hungry as they used to be, and will bump up their pricing just to kind of incentivize them to go out into an area for a smaller project like this. Also, too, a smaller project like this, maintenance of traffic-wise, you know, you've got to keep the roads open. It's a little bit more difficult to construct within side of tight right-of-way. So we're comfortable with these two estimates. We can see $375,000 for alternative one, $600,000 for alternative two. Do you want me to talk about revenue sharing opportunity?
Sure.
Yes. So there are opportunities for VDOT revenue sharing funding. You do have to put forward 50% local fund match for it. However, the one downside right now with this is that the next funding cycle is coming up in 2021 and 2022, for when construction funding would actually become available as part of that.
How many additional rules and regs do we get with the share, revenue sharing?
It's not as many as you would if you had federal funding. You do have to meet the VDOT LA Local Administrator Projects Manual, which has a few other bells and whistles that need to go through it. But you do not have, it's not federal money, it's all state, and it will be local money. So it's, you don't have to do air and noise and things like that.
And basically, it would be the same rules and requirements we're having to meet with the sidewalk project and the repaving project, since those are both considered state-funded projects. Wes and Garrett, I think this is, with the revenue sharing, you have, it's classified as a state-funded project, so a little bit less of a bar than with the federal work, as Wes said.
But we would have to wait a couple of years just to apply, then potentially get it? Go ahead.
The application period is actually coming up later this year. It's just that the funding cycle doesn't start.
Oh, funding cycle, okay.
So we would hear within the next 12 months.
Correct.
But the money wouldn't come available for another two years on the other side of that.
Mm-hmm.
As council will recall, last summer and into the early fall, we worked with you to look at the options that were on the table at the time, that had been on the table historically for dealing with this. And also Garrett, working with Ellen, proposed this, that fourth alternative, which was, can we stay within the public right-of-way that we already had? And they began to work at this. And so these are options inside of the initial design concept that the council approved of, you know, during that time period. So we're back today to show you where we are. It's important if you, if the council would like us to move towards a revenue sharing application, I believe that that opens in August and closes in October, more or less? November. So, you know, that would give us time to do that, if you would like us to do something else. That's also important. But the additional thing, as Ellen and her team work towards the sidewalk project, knowing what this intersection is going to eventually look like, is really important, because we don't want to have to take up existing sidewalk that we've put in. We don't want to box ourselves out. So this, these options that you see are consistent with the sidewalk project that we've got moving forward.
Correct. Now, the two projects would remain separate, because they have different funding sources. But you certainly want to make sure that you're taking one into account as you develop the other one.
Same. The sidewalk would still require, on Pecoson Avenue, would still require you to cross the road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Which is fine. That's always been the case. And then the, you'd mentioned the utility easements. Not asking you for the final answer, but about where are they on this drawing?
So I think this is a laser pointer. So, so there are, so the existing road is down here. Most of the utility poles are right here on this corner. So the poles would either need to be relocated southward or farther over across the roadway.
Which is within our property boundaries. In other words, we're not, we're not, not saying that Virginia, near power, or they will agree with us, but there's a potential that those would be relocated onto city's property and not impact individuals.
Correct. However, downstream, there will be some sort of easement needed. So anytime we change the bearing of the utility line, guy wires will have to be put in place for that. And that's kind of where we're expecting those utility easements to be. And that would be somewhere around here. So for example, if we shifted the pole line this way, there would have to be a counteracting force, so they may actually have to go across the road with a guy wire and a secondary pole in order to support that tension. These are all things worked out, obviously, in the finite design.
Did they ever look at Berry?
The utility companies will underground, but most of the time, that's at the cost of the locality.
Right.
Are both options available for the revenue sharing?
Mm-hmm.
And you apply for the revenue sharing. I'm assuming it's not guaranteed that you'll get that?
Correct.
Do we know what the odds are, you know, what? No way of knowing? I guess they do it based on other applications and how much funds they have available.
Right. It really depends on who would apply during the next pool. You know, sometimes we seem to get a little bit of funding because we are smaller, but with SmartScale, we were actually, the Pecoson specific project was the last project, or the first project to not get funded. It fell just below the cutoff line. So we're doing better. Garrett did a great job applying for it, but it's a wait-and-see type thing.
Okay.
Buddy, hold on. A little, Buddy, answer a question.
Just to give my two cents, I prefer the second option much more, a lot, over the first one, for two reasons. One, it makes more sense, and if we're going to fix the problem, why don't we fix it to the best and safest solution, and that's it. And the other thing is, did y'all give any consideration to signage, stop signs, and things like that?
Yeah.
And my, the reason I ask that is, I've always felt like it was backwards to have people on Pecoson Avenue going westbound, doing 35, and they're going on to Pecoson Avenue, 35 miles an hour, which is kind of northeastbound, like a northwest, whatever. But anyway, that, to me, always should have been the right-of-way, because you've got to turn your head almost, more than 90 degrees to see somebody making those other moves, and you're not expecting somebody making a left turn. And the, every other move is either at 25 miles an hour or from a stop. They've got to stop to make that left, or at least slow to make that left-hand turn. And I, you know, I feel like the yield of the stop ought to be on this, on the west side of that island, so that people making the left turn and coming straight from Leyden Way have to stop or yield to traffic that they can see a whole lot better than if you're making the move on, from Pecoson to Pecoson. That is just my two cents.
Okay. Do we have an idea of the numbers of, or vehicular numbers that turn right onto Leyden Way, or turn left onto, off of Pecoson Avenue, onto, well, no, off of Little Florida, onto Pecoson Avenue, left turn?
We have traffic volume information, but I don't, for the various roads, but I don't think we have that differentiation. VDOT comes in periodically and does...
Back in the morning, it's a lot.
Better turning right into Leyden Way.
When school, when school is letting in, it's very high density.
Turn right into Leyden Way, or turn left onto Pecoson Avenue?
No, they just go through the intersection. I don't know if they have...
Those, I wasn't, I was just wanting to know the turn numbers, if we had looked at the turn numbers.
I don't think there's a lot of left in the warning, because most people are going out.
Right. I didn't think so either. I don't have an idea.
All right. So the white hash mark where Shipwreck Island basically is, and now looks extended, is that an island that you're showing there? Is that what that is?
Yeah. It, in this picture, it's paint, but it could be a raised island, or it can just be paint.
Okay.
And that's just because we've shifted the roadway south in order to accommodate the...
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure, because I like the idea of the raised platforms, and one on the other side will definitely control speed as we straighten the intersection.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's just, I just wanted to make sure that that's what I was looking at there.
Yes, sir.
All right. And for my two cents worth, I like this option. And my other thing is, I don't think we ought to engage the state, because we've been unsuccessful all the way up Victory Boulevard. And this is probably a lower need than that is.
If we're going to tie traffic up messing with the intersection, which is going to inconvenience a bunch of folks, we may as well, for that $225,000, just go with the this option, I would think.
Yeah. Well, I think it fixes a lot of things, including the safety around the school, which I like. And you didn't incorporate the bank turn that I told you about.
No, sir, I did not. Couldn't do that. I have the invisible traffic circle at the same time.
Okay. Buddy, you sure you like this better than a traffic circle?
You don't really want to ask. We're not supposed to use vulgar words in these meetings.
Excuse me. What's your guy? Um... I do have one other question. I also like the second option better than the first. But just looking at the drawing, was there any consideration given for traffic coming from the middle school toward West Creek Road area? Was any consideration being given to where that slash mark area is, having two lanes, so there could be a left turn lane into Leyden Way and another lane around that, so that if somebody was making a left turn into Leyden Way, they wouldn't necessarily back up the traffic? It looks like there would be enough room for that to be split into two lanes.
It could theoretically, from a geometric standpoint, be incorporated, but what we would recommend is to do a traffic count, like we were referring to earlier, and actually get the proper turning movements, because then you can see if it's warranted. Because sometimes, if we open up that much asphalt, kind of unconstrained, then we're eliminating the benefit of the raised median as far as speed is concerned, because people just perceive the two lanes wide to kind of go around that curve.
And the other thing is that it may push the configuration back over where it is.
True.
Well, and I can tell you, I drive through that intersection multiple times every day for the last 20 years, and I can probably count on one time, the number of times I've had to stop coming out from somebody turning left on Leyden Way. Rarely do I ever, I can't even remember when I have to stop for that.
Anybody else could come and see it?
Randy, I just want to, you know, I know why this is needed, and I understand it. But before the next time we talk about this, I would like to see some numbers from the police department about how many wrecks or just vehicle incidents we've had at that intersection. He just brought up, you know, some warranting. I just, my opinion is, you know, we don't have the problems at that intersection to spend the amount of money we're talking about to improve it. That's just my opinion. The figures we're talking about, even the 375 for the first option, which is certainly the worst option of the two, I wouldn't even be interested in spending that money. So I think we definitely need to get some numbers, the turning numbers. You know, we need to get our stats straight before we spend any money on this.
Yeah. Also want a speed survey.
Speed survey?
Yeah. A speed survey right there at the, at that green line. You'd be amazed at the speed coming through there. Okay?
Yeah.
We certainly can just do a speed study, turning. We can do all of that. I mean, obviously, we're going to need to contract with that.
Yep.
That's not something we have the capability. We can include in that report back the, any crash data and other things from the Pecoson Police Department as well. So that'll be our next step, unless otherwise instructed.
Nope, nope. And I would like to see how we would actually, when we come back, what our possibilities are, potentials are for funding this.
Yeah, because I'd hate to not apply for that $300,000. That's a big chunk of money to, what if we applied for it and we got it? That's a big chunk of change to get, to just get, not even try for.
Well, we can have that discussion when we talk about how can we fund it.
Do y'all know the typical turnaround between application time and decision time by the state?
It will be at the end of the year, I believe. Yeah.
I think the letters went out for this year in early January, and typically, they seem to announce preliminary results before that time. So a couple of months, right, is what we're talking about after the applications are submitted. So this time next year, you'd have the answer.
This time next year?
Given the applications that are due in November, Garrett, did you say?
Yes.
How long would it take you to do this? We said we had the funding. How long would it take you to be ready to go to breaking?
It's still going to take a couple of years, probably, and we would also want to time it.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt you either way if we waited until the state, and that's why I'm asking.
No, and the advantage to waiting is you're, everything's funded. If you start early, you, Garrett, I keep asking, what was the phrase about, starting at your own risk?
Just that any work done prior to Commonwealth Transportation Board approval is done at the locality's risk. That's what it says.
So you may not get reimbursed for that portion of the project that's done earlier. So...
Okay. Good, bud.
Well, just to Thomas's comment, I think people in Pecoson drive a lot safer than most of the cities surrounding us. And that's the reason, the accident rate is not going to mean a whole lot to me, but the many times that I've been through that intersection and seen the near accident that is going to turn into one means more to me than, and if we, $600,000 to save somebody's life doesn't...
It's not much.
It ain't much.
That's why I said, I know that the cars that have been in that ditch, I want to make sure they're all recorded. So it's not just a multi-vehicle accident, it's still ones in the...
Will only be able to tell you the things that were reported to us.
Gotcha. Got it.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for your work. Appreciate it.
You have 10 minutes?
You have 10 minutes.